Testing one, two, three. This is a test for news media. Today is Thursday, February nineteenth, two thousand and fifteen. The Durham City Council Meeting and the Thirteenth Annual State of the City Address.
Good evening. We'd like to call the Durham City Council Meeting to order on Thursday, the nineteenth, at five o'clock P.M. and certainly want to welcome all of you who've taken the time to be here on this cold, wintry day, but sunny day. If we could just take a moment of silent meditation, please? Thank you. I'll ask Councilman Brown if he would lead us in the pledge.
All rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of our land, to one nation, under God, indivisible, with every dignity and justice of all.
Madam Clerk, what's your call of the role, please?
Mayor Bell.
Present.
Mayor Pro-Tim Cole-McFadden. Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Cotati. Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Moffett.
Here.
And Councilmember Shul.
Well, let me again say good evening and this is a very special day for me because an opportunity for me to present the State of the City Address. And this will be my thirteenth annual State of the City Address. And while we understand that we're meeting this evening at five o'clock because of the weather, I want to thank all the brave souls that are out here. I understand it was twenty-two degrees when I walked in, so not as bad as it has been. But let me first begin by saying that the state of our city is good and getting better. And to my fellow council members, fellow elected officials, city staff, business and community leaders, and others who were present tonight, I want to welcome you and thank you for being here again. Each year, I'm very honored by your presence and continued support. I'd also like to welcome my fellow residents who are viewing us on Durham Television Network, as well as those who are watching tonight's livestream from the City of Durham's website. Two thousand and fourteen, what will you remember from last year? Is it the outstanding economic development happening in Durham? The opening of the Durham Innovation District, that I call DIT? The construction of new hotels offering visitors and convention goers more than four hundred hotel rooms? Or is it the festivals like the long-established Center Fest? And the new Art of Cool, which brought thousands to our city to enjoy great music and art and adding more than a million dollars into our local economy? Or is it the questions that were raised and the actions taken by some in the community about law enforcement's relationship with residents? Questions that eventually led to a number of actions being put into place to increase transparency, trust, and accountability with our residents? What will you remember for, and what other things you remember? For me, two thousand and fourteen is a memorable year for a lot of reasons, including many of those just mentioned. But what really stands out in my mind is how we, as a community, despite the challenges that come our way, continue to come together and engage each other about what is important to us, to our children, and indeed, our grandchildren. My annual State of the City Address is a time to look at how our accomplishments over years' time are positioning us for the future. But before I go on, I'd like to start by continuing our tradition of looking back at the year before, at our accomplishments, our accolades, and how we all worked together to build on our mission to make Durham a great place to live, work, and play. And don't just take it from me, and look at the accolades that showered on Durham last year. We were number fifteen as America's smartest city cited by Forbes Magazine. We were number eighteen as the best city for young entrepreneurs cited by Nerd Wallet. We were number twenty-nine of the top one hundred best cities to live in in two thousand and fifteen cited by Liveability. We were number twenty-three among America's fittest cities cited by The Active Times. And best places to travel in two thousand and fifteen cited by Travel and Leisure Magazine. And we're cited as number forty-seven as one of the best performing cities of the two hundred metros by Millikan Institute. And the list goes on, accolades that show Durham's future is bright. So bright, in fact, we just might need some shades. All right? All right. All right. I'd like to take just a quick moment to thank the Office of Public Affairs for giving us a quick look back at many of the highlights of the year. The shades were complimented of the city manager out of the city manager's budget. Thank you. But really, so much of what we accomplished was a result of a successful partnership and relationship between city council, the city staff, led by our city manager, Tom Barnfield, our city attorney, Patrick Baker, our city clerk, Deanne Gray, and our remarkable community. We're now into the third year of implementing our five-year strategic plan goals, and administration is in an ongoing process to align their departments' functions to meet those strategic goals. What I'd like to do is reiterate those goals from the mayor's perspective as they affect the city of Durham. The first goal is the strong and diverse economy. Our economy has improved considerably. Our unemployment rate at four point four percent is one of the lowest in the state. But if you're one of the four point four percent that is still unemployed, then unemployment remains a problem, which we hope will be resolved. We need to continue to work to provide quality-paying jobs for our residents who want to work. We must continue to create a business-friendly environment, attracting quality businesses, supporting work-training programs that are aligned with what the employees need, such as those proposed by Made in Durham and Workforce Development. We must do this while at the same time creating an atmosphere with respect to regulations or procedures and guidelines that encourage businesses that are already committed to our city to want to stay and grow, as well as those who may be entertaining moving to our city. A sustainable workforce and business-friendly environment will be key to our continued quality growth and development and to a strong and diverse economy. The second goal is a safe and secure community. Durham's population has increased by about twenty-nine percent. We were about a hundred and ninety-plus thousand when I became, came in office in two thousand and one, and we're now at about two hundred and forty-five thousand persons, an increase over the years from two thousand, two thousand and one to two thousand and fourteen of about twenty-nine percent. And while our population has increased, our violent crime rate has decreased. And when I first came into office, some of you may or may not know, one of the things that I asked the administration to do was to begin to give us monthly quarterly, monthly reports on crime. I didn't want to get into possession where we waited until the end of the year before we found out where we were. And gradually, those moved into quarterly results. But what we've discovered is that from two thousand and one, we're at a high in violent crime of well over, I guess, probably nine hundred and seventy-four per a hundred thousand. That has dropped now to about seven hundred and sixty-four per a hundred thousand in two thousand and fourteen. Our property crime rate has also decreased, even though our population has grown considerably. We were at sixty-nine hundred incidents of property crime per a hundred thousand in two thousand and one, and we're at forty-five hundred plus in two thousand and fourteen. And overall, the total index crime per a hundred thousand residents has trended down from two thousand and one by almost fifty percent, except that it was up slightly from two thousand and thirteen compared to two thousand, where we're in two thousand and fourteen. Our total index crime for a hundred thousand persons per population in two thousand and one was almost seventy-nine, seventy-six hundred, and we're now about fifty-three hundred. A very good decrease, but still not good enough, and we hope that we can keep this trend going down. We must continue to focus on making crime reduction a priority, along with the continued support of our fire department in its attempts to be more responsive to fire calls and education of our residents on fire safety. The third strategic goal was thriving livable neighborhoods. We're making good progress in the revitalization of our neighborhoods, particularly in some of those neighborhoods that have been depressed for years. I continue to believe that strong neighborhoods make a strong city and contribute greatly to the quality of life in our city. And while we continue to focus on helping to improve those neighborhoods that have been distressed, we as a council and administration must maintain a sensitivity and awareness and responsiveness to issues in other neighborhoods throughout the city. And I mean everyday issues that are brought to our attention through individual conversations, through phone calls, through emails, and written letters, and at our coffee with councils if we are to have a thriving, livable neighborhood. The fourth goal is a well-managed city. Physically, we continue to maintain our triple-A bond ratings with the three major bond rating agencies, Standard and Poor's, Moody's, and Fitz. A well-managed city depends on having good employees committed to their jobs and providing the services for which they are hired. In my opinion, the city employees that we have are among the best committed civil servants. We have a very diverse workforce of over twenty-four hundred employees. Many of our employees go beyond the call of duty and perform their duties, and for that, we're grateful. However, just as we expect those employees to perform their duties, it is also important that they also be treated fairly, no matter what the positions they hold in city government, from the lowest-paid staff person to the highest-paid staff person. All should be judged and disciplined fairly when necessary. However, we know that in certain instances, there have been allegations of unequal treatment and discipline in other employment areas with some of our employees. It is important that we determine the veracity of these allegations, and if they prove to be true, provide equitable solutions to correct them, as well as establishing procedures and guidelines to ensure that they don't reoccur. If they do reoccur, the persons responsible for these inequities should be held accountable and accordingly disciplined. The final strategic goal is the stewardship of the city's physical assets. Now, this is an ongoing effort and requires attention to detail as well as the resources to support the maintenance of our facilities. And to that end, I want to congratulate our General Services Director, Joel Reitzler, for his leadership, and Joel has recently announced that he will be retiring. But if you look around City Hall and other city facilities, even in this room, where we didn't know if we were going to be able to meet this evening because it was so cold, Joel made that work, and we're certainly appreciative of that. But the city's physical assets consist of more than just city buildings. There's also streets, sidewalks, water and sewer lines, waste management, and other facilities that require our constant attention. And we as a council must be prepared to provide the resources needed to maintain our physical assets at a high level on an ongoing basis. Last year, the city council voted to dedicate a half-cent of the property tax, which is about one point two million dollars, for the maintenance of our parks and recreation centers and trails. As of December the thirty-first, nearly half of the funding has been used allocated for parks and trail maintenance throughout the city. And remember, our fiscal year begins July to June, so we adopted that in July of two thousand and thirteen, and we're into December the thirty-first, we spent about a half million dollars, two thousand and fourteen. December the thirty-first, we spent about half of that money. And I think these last two slides that we've shown are just some of the much-needed repairs that have occurred at various parks throughout the city. So we've seen where we were in two thousand and fourteen. The question is, what do we look forward to in two thousand and fifteen and beyond? Well, if we look at some of the things that are on our table, the complete construction and occupancy of Phase One of the hundred and thirty-two lots at Southside East, and in my opinion, when this development is completed, people begin to move in there now, it will be one of the finest and truly mixed-income apartment developments in the state of North Carolina. We must also begin planning for Phase Two of another eighty-five lots that are going to be built in Southside East. We need to complete the construction of the forty-eight homes in Southside West and begin planning for the additional Southside West home sites. We must continue our efforts under the leadership of our Mayor Pro-Tim Corcoran-McFadden and other agencies to reduce homelessness in general and specifically reducing homelessness for our veterans. And I would like to see us set a manageable goal for reducing homelessness in two thousand and fifteen. Planning for the new police headquarters will begin in two thousand and fifteen. We just had a work session on that earlier today, and it's certainly a need for looking at how we get community input in this effort, and we hope one of the ways that we can do that is through a charrette. And while the city does not have the responsibility for building the Durham Orange Light Rail, we will have the responsibility for approving, as well as planning, for access to the transit stops, and also improving important sections to the plan for the corridor that goes through Durham. It is important that our residents, as well as the appropriate city staff, attend critical public meetings set for March and June and September of this year. There are decisions to be made that will help determine the next steps for the Durham Orange Light Rail project. And more details of these meetings will be publicized by Triangle Transit, and I encourage residents to visit the website that's listed on the screen for more information. If the Federal Transit Administration gives approval to enter into engineering in the fall of two thousand and sixteen, then from two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and nineteen, we'll be devoted to engineering the project. After which, if the Federal Transit Administration approves a full funding grant agreement, which we would hope would happen in two thousand and nineteen, then utility locations will begin in two thousand and twenty. Construction for the light rail will begin from two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-five, and testing and startup will be in two thousand and twenty-six. And this all assumes that we have the state and local matching funds that are available. Now, it might seem long-range to be talking about this project, which I've just said, if we're successful, won't happen until two thousand and twenty-six. But many of us just left a meeting this evening with the Secretary of Transportation, Anthony Fox. And one of the points that he made is that you don't begin planning for what's happening necessarily in two thousand and sixteen, you really begin planning what's going to happen in two thousand and forty-five. Because if you look at the development and projected growth of this community, it's sorely going to be needed. So while two thousand and sixteen is the date we hope that transit will be starting, two thousand and forty-five is not too far from that. And not only we're planning for now, we're planning for the future. And decisions by the city council on street resurfacing and sidewalk plans need to be made, as well as decisions on city swimming pools in this coming year. We must also continue to work with Google, Time Warner, AT&amp;T, and Frontier in preparation for fiber installation. And we have to continue to focus on reducing crime and improving police-community relations. I recently attended the United States Conference of Mayors Winter Conference in Washington, D.C., last month. And one of the committees that I sat in on was the Committee on Strengthening Police-Community Relations in American Cities. And the committee made several key recommendations. One was building trust between the police and community. Two was improving police department practices. Three was ensuring timely and accurate communications. Four was conducting independent investigations of deaths related to police encounters. Five was addressing racial and economic disparities and community frustrations with and distress of governmental institutions. And the final one was providing national leadership. I have shared this report with our city manager and requested that he review it for applicability to our situation here in Durham and report his recommendations to the city council. The report states that in some instances, the recommendations go beyond the purview of mayors and city councils and police chiefs, and calls for actions by the broader community and cities, the nation as a whole, and by the federal government. The report may also be the basis for a broader Durham community conversation on police and community relations. But however, let me emphasize, and let me emphasize very strongly, that we as a city council and city administration, respect and support the overall work that our police department does, providing services to our residents of our city. And I have repeatedly said that the police probably have one of the more difficult responsibilities in our city administration, in serving our city. At the same time, we must always evaluate how those services are being delivered and work to improve those areas in which they may be deficient, while applauding and acknowledging those efforts to go beyond the normal call of duty in solving very difficult cases. Our police put their lives on the line every day, and for that, we are grateful. And we are angered when we see attempts on their lives. We will support their efforts at the highest level to apprehend those persons responsible for such cowardly acts, and ask the community to support in helping to apprehend such individuals. You may recall that at my last State of the City Address in February two thousand and fourteen, I focused on the challenge of reducing poverty, neighborhood by neighborhood, year by year, starting in two thousand and fourteen. We kicked off that initiative in March of two thousand and fourteen at the Durham Rescue Mission, and we're very appreciative for Reverend Ernie Mills for hosting that. We had over a hundred persons from a broad cross-section of the community in attendance. And we established six task forces, one on education, finance, health, housing, jobs, and public safety. And I want to thank all of the people who volunteered their time and service on this initiative, to include the staffs of the city, county, and Durham Public Schools, and most importantly, the residents of the neighborhoods in which the initiative has focused. The Reducing Poverty Initiative focuses on neighborhoods in northeast-central Durham, with approximately twenty-three hundred people living in approximately eleven hundred homes and apartments. And after many meetings among the task force members, staff, and most importantly, again, the residents of the neighborhoods, a community survey of the neighborhoods was conducted, focusing on the six task force areas. The results of those surveys were compiled by the city's Neighborhood Improvement Services Department. Again, I want to congratulate and thank NIS for the work that they've done and continue to do in this effort. And the results were distributed to the task force members, as well as shared by the residents. In January of this year, the task forces assembled at Holton Resource and Community Center to present their action plans to address the issues derived from the community surveys and to respond to questions from those in attendance. The year two thousand and fifteen will be a year of action for the task forces, to implement and execute their plans with periodic reports to the city council at our work sessions. And as I said last year, the road to reducing poverty is not easy, and it's mostly an uphill battle. I have seen over the last few months, the people in poverty are willing to work in partnership with the many people who are willing to assist them. It is a journey that we must continue, and it's assistance that we must provide. Finally, as I conclude, great things continue to happen in our city. We're the fourth-largest city in North Carolina with a population of approximately two hundred and forty-five thousand people. We're a city with a very diverse population, with no ethnic majority. And as with any large and growing city, we have many challenges, and some of which I've spoken to earlier in my remarks. And as we grow and develop, we must also continue to be environmentally and infrastructure-sensitive to decisions that we make in improving growth and development, while striking the balance that will continue to make our city attractive and sustainable. And we also know, as my colleague Councilman Brown and many of my other colleagues say so often, we have more needs than resources. But we have always had the challenge of making decisions that lead to a balanced budget, while at the same time taking into consideration those priorities with which we have the resources to support. I remain convinced that we as a city and administration, led by our city manager, our city attorney, our city clerk, are up to meeting those challenges. And I again want to say thanks for taking the time to listen, and I hope that you agree with me, great things are happening in Durham. with me, great things are happening in Durham and that the state of our city is getting good and getting better. May God bless America, and may God bless Durham. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. We're going to take a brief, brief break, and we're going to commence the council meeting at 5:30 PM.
No, I'm talking about dragging our feet.
This evening, I have the very distinct pleasure and honor of making a presentation to a person that we all know and admire and have seen so many different settings. I had the opportunity to attend a reception in his honor that was given by his company a couple of weekends ago, and you could just tell by the people in the room and the comments that they made, how much they admire this individual. I'd like to ask Larry Stogner if he would join me, if you don't mind.
Didn't want to drag, drag you out in this cold weather, but you're a weatherman and a reporter, so you're used to all this stuff, right?
Got it.
I'm not going to read all of this, but I would like to speak to some of the points. It speaks to the fact that whereas after 39 years of service, on January 23rd, 2015, veteran ABC 11 WTVD news anchor Larry Stogner announced he would step down from the WTVD anchor desk. Whereas Mr. Stogner began his television career at UNCTV and joined ABC 11 Eyewitness News in 1976, and in 1982, he was named anchor of the 6:00 and 11:00 o'clock newscast. Whereas he's the most senior broadcast journalist in the Raleigh-Durham market, and has covered many of the most important historic events in the United States and the world. Whereas in 1979, Larry Stogner was the only reporter to travel to Japan and China to cover Governor, former Governor Jim Hunt on his first international trip to recruit foreign companies to expand into North Carolina. Whereas in 2010, Larry Stogner was inducted into the prestigious North Carolina Journalism Hall of Fame, the only local news anchor to be so honored. Two years later, he was inducted into the North Carolina Broadcasters Hall of Fame, and he's also the recipient of the 4-H Lifetime Achievement Award. Whereas Larry was born in Burlington, North Carolina, raised in Yanceville, and graduated from the University of North Carolina Chapel Hills, his wife Bobby and he are blessed with six children. Whereas an honor of his many years of service to WTVD and to the region, ABC 11 honored Larry Stogner's long and storied career on air the week of February 2nd, and Larry joined the celebration on Friday, February 16th. Whereas Larry Stogner was the dean of Eyewitness Newsroom and the patriarch of the ABC 11 family. Now therefore, I, William V. Bill Bell, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, hereby proclaim February 19th, 2015, as Larry Stogner Day in Durham, and hereby urge all the citizens to take special note of the observance of Larry Stogner for his wisdom, for his leadership, and for 39 years of service to ABC 11 WTVD-TV. And witness by hand and corporatival, City of Durham, North Carolina, this is the 19th day of February 2015. And Larry, I would like to present this to you.
Thanks.
And in addition, one of the symbols that we give is the key to the city. And I told Larry when I was going to present this to him, he didn't need the key to the city, but he can put it on his bragging wall, on his desk, as a commemoration from the City of Durham. So again, Larry, we certainly appreciate all that you've done for this community. I'm sure you'll continue to do, and wish you the best of you and your family.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
And thank you.
My voice is not in the greatest shape, so I'm not going to talk very long. I just wanted to thank each and every one of you for coming out tonight and honoring me this way.
Let me ask, are there any announcements or amendments out there? I said council. Recognize Councilman Moffett.
Yes, I have two. First, I want to wish everyone a Happy New Year. This is a new year in large parts of the world, and so Happy New Year, everybody. The second thing, I just wanted to give a shout-out to former city councilman and state Senator Mike Woodard, who came out for the State of the City address tonight. So, Mike, good to see you.
Can I ask Councilman Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would regret that I offer sympathy to the family of Johnny Red Williams, who is a former member of this council.
For solid, in Johnny's order, honor. Thank you. Recognize the Councilman Brown.
Yeah, I just wanted to announce to Larry before he leaves that there's no relationship between the fact that this is his receiving the key to the city and that this is his day, and the fact that it will be the coldest day in Durham history, probably. Because Larry's warm and heartfelt newscasts over the years have done a lot to bring this city together, and he will be sorely missed.
See, any other announcements, comments? If not, recognize the city manager for prioritizing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. If I could please call on Deputy Manager for Operations, Beau Ferguson, to come up and briefly take this opportunity, while we have some folks watching and some media here, talk about the changes that we've had to make in the solid waste schedule for the remainder of the week as a result of the cold weather.
Thank you. Beau Ferguson, Deputy City Manager for Operations. So just wanted to highlight among several operational changes this week. We did have to suspend solid waste and recycling collection, as well as yard waste collection, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday of this week because of conditions on the streets. The solid waste department has been monitoring conditions each day in an attempt to see if we could get out. And what we have devised for a makeup schedule going forward for solid waste, for your regular refuse collection, we're just going to resume normal collections next week as planned. There won't be any attempt to make up from this week. However, given that we have every other week recycling collection, we felt it was important to try and come up with a plan to collect the blue week, which is what this week was, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday collections. So this Saturday, we will have regular collections for all customers who would have been collected Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday this week for their recycling only. So we're asking our customers to do a set-out of their recycling containers. Again, that's this Saturday. And then, starting Monday, we'll return to normal operations. That will be the red week. This was the blue week for recycling customers. We'll, we're going to have an intense public information campaign today and tomorrow to get that out to customers. Community List serves. Our public information office is doing a great job on that, but we wanted to take this opportunity to highlight that as well.
Thank you. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Entertainer motion to accept the manager's prioritizing, which we found. It's been properly moved, second. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote.
It passes seven to zero.
I can recognize the city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No priority items.
I recognize the city clerk.
No items, Mr. Mayor.
We move the agenda, consent agenda. Item one is cash collections, performance audit, January 2015. Item two is FY 2014, 2015 amendments to the budget ordinance, grant project ordinance, and capital improvements program ordinances. Item three is FY 2014, 2015, emergency solutions grant and city general funds, housing for New Hope Inc., sub-recipient contract, rapid rehousing services. Item four is Fourth Amendment to contract for emergency solutions grant and dedicated housing fund, rapid rehousing services, housing for New Hope. Item five is hazardous, household hazardous waste contract. Item six is software maintenance service agreement. Item seven is Open Data Initiative Professional Services Contract. Item eight is Civic Plus Professional Service Agreement. Item nine is Network Infrastructure Lands Improvement Contract. Item 10 is Transit Bus Repower Contract. Item 11 is North Carolina Railroad Company and North Southern Railway Company Wireline Supplemental Agreement. And that concludes all the items. Entertainer motion for consent agenda. It's been properly moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote.
It passes seven to zero.
Are there any other items to come before the council? If not, we adjourn at 5:41 PM. Thank you.